All right, good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, September 27, 2021, at 4:00 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. We're gonna take things a little bit out of order today. We were gonna go, we were going to go into executive session first, but we're gonna push that off, waiting for Attorney Fair to get here. So I'm gonna kick off with agenda item three. So this is approval for minute, the meeting minutes from 9:9, 2021. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 9:9, 21.
Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so actually Attorney, Attorney Fair's here now, so can I ask, sorry about that, just get out and then we're doing executive session, have you back in, sorry about that.
We just wanted you guys to go twice the steps.
Yeah, so that's all, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
All right. Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Burnwell?
Oh, yeah.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, all right, so I'll exercise for you guys. Now, we're actually back in open session, I realize I made a mistake, I did not state the reasons why we're going to executive session, so I'm gonna do that now, and then we'll go back to executive session. So the reason why we're going to executive session is Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Public Employee Union, Local 1144, Laoina, all bargain units, the dispatch highway and clerical bargain units, the Free Town Police Association, and the Free Town Full-Time Firefighter Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. Number two is because of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, Excel Recycling LLC versus Town of Free Town. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Burnwell?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair declares, I'm just the chairman, that the bargaining and litigating position of the town would be detrimental, so discuss those in open session.
Yes. All right, thank you. And we will be returning into open session after executive session. All right, thank you, everybody, we're back in open session, sorry, executive session took a little longer than expected. So to keep things moving along here and to, out of, you know, everyone's time here, I'm gonna jump out of order a little bit. So I'm gonna jump to the Personnel Board. So first, I'm gonna acknowledge the retirement of Officer Sweet and Magnet, effective 9/15/2021. Thank you very much, 20 years of service, really appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item 24, so this would be the vote on the retirement incentive request. So in executive session, we authorized Attorney Fair and Chief Abbott to work with the union to come to a settlement or agreement, so that's all, you know, so we can't really make a vote on that tonight, but there will be something figured out there shortly, and they'll reach out to you guys. So does that, does that work? All right, yep, and the same goes for agenda item 25, which is discussion and vote on the retirement incentive for Deborah Souza. Same kind of thing, we have to do a little more research on that, and so that should be taken care of shortly. All right, so with that, I'm gonna then move on to the agenda item, it's gonna be so, I'm gonna be so messed up after that.
I'm checking them off.
So, this is a discussion and vote on establishing Free Town as a Purple Heart City. So is there anyone here to speak on that? You know, might wanna move up a little bit, you think the camera will? Just say your name.
Robert Kleveka, Town of Free Town's veteran service officer. The proclamation in front of you that I'm asking that you sign today is pretty explanatory as far as we would like to honor all the Purple Heart veterans and have Town of Free Town as one of the few so far that are going to do this in the state of Massachusetts. And we'll get the Department of Defense, Transportation, will provide us with signs to put at various entrances, no cost to us, showing that we are a Purple Heart town. And I think it's a great honor to do for our veterans who have given that much.
Great, thank you very much, yeah. My brother, my uncle, and my grandfather all served, and so, you know, something very important and close to me, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to establish Free Town as a Purple Heart city.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, next, Cheryl, I'll take care of you. All right, so this is going to-
Passes down to Lillian, that's an additional thing that they have to sign along with that certified vote. So Cheryl, I'll draw the town clerk for the Town of Free Town. As you are all aware, we've discussed in prior meetings that every 10 years is the federal census, based on the findings and the estimated population totals. That could mean that the boundary lines for precincts would be changing. Initially, with the initial reports of preliminary numbers, we thought there might be a change in one of the voting precincts, especially Precinct 2 kind of overflowing into Precinct 3. The final numbers did come through through the state at the end of August, and the news, we don't have to change any precinct lines. So this is just a formality and a procedure that I request that you sign in front of you, the certified vote to accept the existing precincts 1, 2, and 3 boundary lines, along with a meet and bounds agreement, and then once that's signed off on, we can proceed and send that off to the state for approval.
All right, that's great, 'cause I know you got those pretty new signs made.
Yes.
So, unfortunately, we had to change those.
So, and we're right under 2,000, so we went, so just to, for plain information, the last federal census in 2010, our population was 88, 70, we are now at 92,06, so we're right underneath that 10,000 population mark. So that's where we want to be in 10 years, that may change, but that's what we have now.
So this is something I do still have to make a vote on right now, right?
Yes, you do have to, yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2020 precincting plan for the Town of Free Town.
Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, thank you, Cheryl, appreciate it.
And they have to physically sign this map as well.
You have to physically sign the map and-
Physically sign the map?
Yes, please.
If you wanna do it now, she can just do it.
Do it now, of course.
She can do it.
I don't get out, get out of my chair very often, very much.
So we have the documents there for you. Just sign, just on your knees there.
Is that my name?
Yes.
Thank you. What's that? Okay. All right, Cheryl? Keep you on the hot seat.
Oh, you want me on the hot seat?
So we'll move on to agenda item 8, which is discussion and vote on limiting the number of authorized notary publics at Town Hall.
So again, Cheryl, I'll draw the town clerk, so you have in front of you a memo that I sent back in July, requesting that as a town, we take a look at what the policy is for having in-house notary publics. This came about through the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association, where there were town clerks who were held liable and remained in a lawsuit.
Hold on a second, excuse me, gentlemen, just to keep it down, we have the recording, so, thank you.
So we're just trying to take a look at honing in and possibly creating a policy where, you know, those who want to become notaries can do so, but specifically naming certain folks within Town Hall and having that added to their job description, just so that, you know, we can control liability issues. There's a lot of, it's pretty easy and pretty simple to get your notary commission through the state, however, there's not a lot of training. So, you know, Secretary of State's office has informed us that as we as former employees, there are certain documents that we cannot notarize, such as wills, powers of attorney, anything to do with real estate. So we thought that may be possibly working with one of the selectmen, or now the town administrator, that there was a policy that for certain job functions within Town Hall, that can be possibly written into their job description, and then if those folks who wanted to do it after hours on their own time, that would be fine, but not to be doing that type of notarization during Town Hall.
That, that makes a lot of sense to me, um, so is this something-
Just so the town is covered.
Yeah, so is this something we can really vote on today, or is this kind of something I'm gonna authorize Debbie you to work on?
That's fine, I think working with Debbie, you know, that would be fine.
Yeah, I think something that we have to kind of create a policy, and then once we can create that, maybe we come back to the selectmen and say, this is what we've come up with, and just have you verify that you agree with it.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
All right.
Because if you're not there, yeah.
All right.
And currently, we do it as a courtesy anyway to our, to our residents, with the exception of those types of documents, so it's a service that we want to continue to give our residents, we don't want to take that away, we just want to hone in and just have more of a-
Clarify, yeah, no, I think, in general, I think all of our policy's gonna be kind of looked at and considered, so the first, a good step in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I mean, just, you know, keep things moving along here, don't wanna waste anyone's time. What are you here for, so I could?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm EverSource Energy.
Okay, yep. I can move on to that.
That is number 17.
17, yep. So this is the road opening permit for EverSource for, on South Main Street. So could you speak to that a little bit, you know, exactly, or just high level, you know, what's gonna be?
Um, sure, we had a site visit with some officials from the town, and we agreed that the best route to move forward would be to do some test pits to confirm the design, and the test pits would be to look the manholes and the depth of the culverts, so that we could redesign if we needed to, and bring that forward to the board for a vote for the conduit work.
Perfect, so, all right, so this is just kind of the vote to get those test pits?
I'm sorry.
This is the vote to get those test pits, approval to get those test pits going?
Uh, I'm sorry.
This is the vote, this would approve the digging the test pits?
That's correct, that's what tonight is about.
Yep, so I wanna make sure we're all clear on that. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the road opening permit for EverSource for South Main Street.
Motion made.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then, same thing, well, okay, sorry, the next one is not you.
Nope, just the one for her.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I'm to leave, so.
Okay, all right, George Grumwold's leaving. Good evening, go on.
Have a good night, George.
All right, who's next?
Number 11.
Okay. All right, discussion and vote on the, on the contract between the Town of Free Town and Specialty Vehicles, Inc., chief?
Yes, sir.
This is for you, I think.
Yeah.
Tell us about the specialty vehicle, please.
Uh, it's the same cover we used for the last rescue we got. We basically were trying to buy almost identical system, almost to the rescue we have at Station 3 or Station 2.
Okay.
And it's purchased through the Richard Powell's Area Planning Council, it's a group executive purchase, and all we use on the contract, and we're gonna get in the process. I don't expect to see it anytime soon with all the backlog of the vehicles and that kind of stuff, but at least we might get a process started, similar to the fire engine we wanted to, things rolling.
Yeah, I, I had the, my wife and I went and bought a new car this weekend. It's unbelievable, so I can only imagine what it's like buying a new fire, you know, sort of rescue vehicle. All right, well, thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the contract between Town of Free Town and Specialty Vehicles.
Motion made.
All right, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think you're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lillian, where should we go next here?
Number 22, Public Health Nurse Update, and next.
Yes, all right, so, well, yeah, this is for health, but-
It doesn't matter. All right, so agenda item number two, Public Health Nurse Update Discussions and Vote on COVID Protocols. So with that, I'll turn things over, Laurie, to let her talk a little bit, but we stand.
Okay, do you want me to give you the update first, as far as where we have the five numbers and everything?
Please.
Can we do that first? Okay. All right, so so far for the Town of Free Town, since the beginning, we're at a total of 1,130 cases. We currently have 36 active cases here in town that I'm following. In the last two weeks, there have been 34 new cases. Our 14-day percent positivity, so basically of the tests that were done, how many came at positive, we were at 4.38%, which is down slightly from the last time I reported, which we were at 5.14. So we actually are below right now New Bedford, Fall River, which New Bedford's at 5.91, Fall River at 5.15, but Lakeville, which is close to us and also in the same school district, they are up at 6.09% positive rate. So as far as cases for the month of August, we had 23 cases, one had been hospitalized, no deaths, and of that, 73, 29 of them had been vaccinated, so about 40%. For the month of September, we're looking so far at 74 cases, two had gone to the hospital, zero deaths, and I don't know if all the numbers are in yet, but it looks like only eight of those have been vaccinated, so definitely a low percentage of the cases for September have been vaccinated. As far as variants of concern, there aren't many numbers in there for September, so right now it only shows two of those were the Delta variant, not sure, sometimes they take a little while before all that testing gets done and kind of gets put into the system. So I know last time you wanted to kind of little breakdown as far as agents with cases, so I'll give you the numbers for September. So less than 12 years old is, that number comes in second, we have had, of those 74 cases, 25 of them have been, have been less than 12 years old. So we are seeing lots in that younger age group, and obviously the less than 12 right now are not eligible for the vaccine. 12 to 15-year-olds, we have one, 16 to 19-year-olds, we have two, 20 to 29, we have eight, and then here's the next biggest group, ages 30 to 49 years old, we've had 27 cases so far for the month of September, so that, between that and the less than 12, those are two big groups. 50 to 64, we have nine, 64 to 74, we have two, and then greater than 75, we currently have zero for the month of September. And if you look at our vaccination rates, that greater than 75, for fully vaccinated, we're at 91% for Free Town, so you see where that group, which obviously that's the most vulnerable group, so in that group, we have zero cases, and we're at 91%. Let's see, and then that group that the highest, you know, 30 to 49-year-olds, we're at about, fully vaccinated, we're at 61% for that group. And unrelated to COVID, just another little quick update, is mosquitoes, so obviously thank goodness for the month, for this whole season, we've had zero cases of triple A positive mosquitoes throughout the whole state. As far as West Nile, there have been 133 positive mosquitoes, one positive animal, it was alpaca in Middlesex County, and there have been seven human cases of West Nile virus, and one of them was in Bristol County. So far, we haven't had any positive mosquitoes here in Free Town, but we have had area towns that have had positive mosquitoes, like Dighton, Fall River, and Somerset. So until the hot forest, hot frost, sorry, obviously, we need to make sure that everyone is using repellents, avoiding those peat mosquito hours, so between dusk and dawn, really important, until we get that hot forest and everyone's kind of taking those measures. You know, mosquitoes don't just kind of stay in one town, so obviously they can, you know, come over to our town too from other towns, so just kind of being on the lookout as far as with that, and maybe we can, I can kind of put something together, and we can kind of put that out, just making people aware, and just to be vigilant, promote it longer until they get that hot frost.
Yeah, great.
That's it with our numbers. Any questions on that?
No.
No.
That's very useful, very helpful.
So we have to vote on the COVID protocols, and I'm assuming that's just what we have, the mask mandate?
Yeah.
So basically, we have something that's the mask recommendation, our masking guidance for unvaccinated, unvaccinated residents should continue to wear masks in indoor settings and when they can socially distance, and then for fully vaccinated, a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when indoors and not in your own home, and have a weakened immune system, or if you are an increased risk for severe disease because of your age or underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system. Is that a risk, is it, is increased risk for severe disease or is an unvaccinated adult? I guess, once again, this is something that I would respectfully ask Laurie to kind of give a little bit of guidance on. Do you agree with this?
So that is, yeah, so that is the, that went into effect a while back with Massachusetts, so as far as-
It, it supersedes whatever we do, right, basically?
Right, so that's the minimum of what needs to be done as far as, you know, going into any building, or just kind of put it out there, and, you know, as far as CDC and that type of thing. So as far as, you know, masks, you know, obviously those that have a weakened immune system should be wearing a mask, those are unvaccinated, obviously, we don't wanna be carding people and, you know, doing anything like that as far as going into a building. We obviously need to make people aware of the numbers, obviously, cases are up right now, so, you know, obviously, people are encouraged to wear a mask.
Yeah.
So I think just kind of that we're following the mask guidelines.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need to put anything like that, everyone has to wear a mask.
Yeah, because it's the mask recommendation, so I even have to make a vote on it, because it's something that's already in place, right?
As long as we're not altering it, I don't believe we need to do any kind of vote.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I mean, I guess we could, but we want to theoretically, but I don't see why we're, you know.
No.
So, okay, well, thank you, Laurie, I appreciate it, as always.
All right, thank you. And you have one other item, agenda item 21.
Yep, so agenda item number 21, discussion and vote on requested amendment of betterment agreement between the Town of Free Town and Mr. Richie Grant of 145 South Main Street in Sonic Pass. This is due with repairing of septic system, so-
Yes, it's a betterment.
So I, I don't have a problem with that, so-
All of this is changing the terms of the loan.
Change the terms, I was about to say, it's changing the terms of the loan, not changing the loan at all, just the, the dates, it's like the 20 years or whatever.
Yeah.
With that, I will make a motion to change-
I'll, so, yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
I guess, yeah, you second it?
I'll second it.
It's hard with two people, all right, all in, yeah, you do the all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I think I'll take, just back over now, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, so, are we, can I go, go in order now? Is there anyone else here for any other agenda item? No? All right, great.
Still feel safer.
Yes, I love it. All right, so next is agenda item four, discussion and vote to approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and Public Employees Union, Local 1144, Free Town, Highway Department, the Labor International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, effective 7/1/2021 through 6/30/2024. So I will entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
Motion made.
I'll second it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we already took care of agenda item six and seven and eight, and now agenda item nine, discussion and vote on license agreement and point of purchase understanding between the Town of Free Town and the Masters Meters, and Master Meters for upgrades to water meter reading equipment. So I did, I looked at this, um, get to the right page here, so this is pretty much, the meter equipment we have is obsolete, and from what the Water and Sewer Commission has told us, and so we need to make some upgrades. The total cost here is about $12,000, that's the estimate, right? Um, I think it's something we need to do. I'm not an expert in this, but I will rely on the professionals, um, so any, any other thing on that? Seems pretty straightforward. All right, so I'll-
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, please.
You know, this afternoon, when we met with the Water and Sewer Commissioners, they suggested that it was a robust contract, that you may want to send it to legal first.
Okay.
So that's what their suggestion was.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion that, that we, let me see, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve the contract between Town of Free Town and Specialty Vehicles, pending review from council.
Motion made.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this is a discussion, sorry, agenda item 12.
All right.
Discussion, what's that?
We're at 10.
We're at 9, so we were at 10.
Oh geez, sorry, losing it. Discussion vote on the Jimmy Fund Walk for, for 10-3, 2021, sponsored by Lisa McGlaughlin and Heather Povalo. This seems pretty straightforward. I looked at the, I mean, one question I had here is, for this walk, though, Lillian, you might know this, is there gonna be like a police or-
No, they said that there was gonna be maybe 15 people involved in it. Police did sign off on it already.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned, like-
There was one section that was, was a busy road, you did-
Yeah, like side, like, I don't know if there's sidewalks really for the whole thing, but if it's 15 people, that's, that seems reasonable, like, police have signed off on it, I'm not gonna get in the way of the Jimmy Fund Walk, so, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the Jimmy Fund Walk on 10-3, 2021.
Motion made.
Second it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, now, since we still want to do this, the mechanism is the, is the ballot for April 2022, so I'll entertain a motion to put the, put something on the ballot to abolish the farm excess tax for April 2022.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So besides, so now, agenda item 14 is discussion to add or remove any warrant articles before the warrant is finalized? That, besides the one we just spoke of, is there anything else?
The Water Sewer Enterprise Fund?
So-
But did they officially ask to withdraw it?
They did, okay, and that is-
That was last I knew they were on.
Yeah, I knew it was on the fence, I, I did, I saw something coming across, so that would be, which is kind of great news, right, because that was one of those gonna be, definitely a water-
I don't think it's on yet, I think we moved it out already.
Okay. So what article number was that, though?
Was it 28?
I think it was 28, yeah.
Um, so I guess I'm gonna phrase this, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to remove the article regarding the, uh, Sewer and Water Commission becoming, leaving an enterprise fund and becoming a town department.
Motion made.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only other one will be-
Even if we did vote on it, it, it has to be on, on the ballot. So it makes sense to remove this from the article just to have less confusion. We also don't currently charge anyone farm animal access tax in the first place. So this is kind of just cleaning up, you know, that part of our, uh, town here. So I will entertain a motion to remove Article thirty-one from the special town meeting.
Motion made.
I'll second it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now, since we still want to do this, the mechanism is the, um, is the ballot for April twenty twenty-two. So I'll entertain a motion to put the, um, put something on the ballot to abolish the farm access tax for April twenty twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So besides, so now, our, uh, agenda item fourteen is discussion to add or remove any warrant articles before the warrant is finalized. That, besides the one we just spoke of, is there anything else?
The Water Sewer Enterprise Fund?
So.
But, did they officially ask to withdraw it?
They did, okay. And that is.
Last I knew they were.
Yeah, I knew it was on the fence, I, I did, I saw something coming across, so that would be, um, which is kind of great news, right? Because that was one of those gonna be, definitely a water.
I don't think it's on yet, I think we moved it already.
Okay. So what article number was that though?
Was it twenty-eight?
I think it was twenty-eight, yeah.
Um, so I guess I'm gonna phrase this, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to remove the article regarding, um, the a town, uh, sewer and water commission becoming, leaving enterprise fund and becoming a town department.
Motion made.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only other one will be, uh, the test of dams.
Yeah.
Do you want to leave it as is and, and, and the powers table it at the beginning?
I think we should leave it on there and then that way it's already been voted on. Once we get pending, because you're talking about the coal parks.
Yes.
For as far as how did we have to get the agreement from them? So I feel like if we do it and then coal parks gives the okay, we're all set versus.
Right, I agree, I'm just, just, I think leave it there and we can always table that off in the night of the meeting depending on where we're at.
Yeah, and for, for the folks at home, just kind of background, so, uh, we have an article to, for the town to either approve or deny us receiving the, uh, dam and also some coal verts, um, from church own banks. Unfortunately, or there's, we've since learned that there's a, um, option, what is it called?
Press rider.
Yeah. With the coal parks, and they, they do not plan on, um, giving that first right up, first refusal up. So just something else we need to figure out, but we decide, I think it makes sense for us to keep it on, on the warrant. And, you know, work that detail out later on. All right. Okay, so I think we've taken care of, let me just make sure, so that's fourteen. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to finalize closing post of special town meeting warrant.
Motion made.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we took care of sixteen?
Nope.
Nope?
We have lost.
Okay, so this is, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I did have resource one, that was, that gave me a lot. So this is on Water Street as well? I thought it said South Main Street, but I think it's.
There are three different road openings tonight.
Okay. So what exactly is this one?
The North Water Street one was, um, the Water Street one was for like a sidewalk opening to put a driveway.
Okay.
One forty-one South Main.
So, yeah, I guess what's, what's the one forty-one South Main?
That one? Road opening. But they may not hit the. They may destroy the sidewalk.
Yeah, so this is for. Hold it right away, Sewer Service. One forty-one Coburg Street. Oh, they, I think that might be, maybe that's why I'm getting screwed up, messed up on here, there's a, uh, no.
You had Ever Source and South Main Street, which you've already dealt with, but then this is another one.
Yeah, I was misreading it, sorry, so if I look at the application here, the opening permit, so it says street name, South Main Street, street number one forty-one, and below that says nearest perpendicular street is Coburg, that's why I was getting messed up. All right, so I don't see any problem just, just to access the water main. They said the cutting of sidewalk is unlikely. All right, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, to approve the road sidewalk opening permit for one forty-one South Main Street.
Motion made.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, took care of the next one, right? And then this is seventeen, so now eighteen is discussion vote on the road opening permit for three North Main Street.
That's removing three granite curb sections ten feet east of backyard entrance walkway for driveway installation and paving.
Okay, yep, that seems to be fine by me, any, any kind of questions on that?
No.
All right, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the road opening permit for north, uh, three North Main Street.
Motion made.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions, Debbie?
Well, the application says Water Street.
That's the cross street?
Yeah.
So the street number is three North Main?
It says street name Water Street.
Do I have it backwards?
You might have it backwards.
I have it backwards, you're right now.
All right, is that, you think that'd be fine, do you think?
I would just vote for it for Waters Three Water Street.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the road opening permit for three Water Street.
Motion made.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, ambulance payment, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance payments totaling seventy-one thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents and write offs totaling seventeen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, we have discussion of vote on signing revised agreement for Comcast phone systems of the COI. So it looks like it was originally supposed to be four, then it moved to five phones, or is, is that, that pretty much it? It's an extra twenty dollar, twenty dollars a month? So we, and we obviously need all five, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine by me. So I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve the revised agreement for the Comcast phone systems at the COI.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Took care of Board of Health, um, since George had to take off, I will take over Personnel Board. Okay, so we've already addressed agenda items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Now we have, so twenty-six is discussion of vote to approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and Patricia Roderick. Um, I looked over that, looks good. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
Uh, motion made.
I'll second that, uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the appointment of Patricia Roderick as treasurer slash tax collector effective, effective nine twenty-seven twenty twenty-one through six thirty twenty twenty-two. I will entertain a motion to appoint, to make that appointment.
Motion made.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item twenty-eight is discussion of vote on budget transfer requests from Reserve Fund to wage a treasurer tax collector in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And I'm sure this is to cover the, uh, the, the increased salary or the new position there? I think it is.
I think it's to cover, um, bringing Jessica back.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I missed, you're right, yep.
And help and trying to.
Yep, that's right, sorry. I didn't know that. I forgot. All right, thank you, Debbie. So, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, to approve that budget transfer so we can bring Jessica back to help with the transition.
Motion made.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So then, this is the agreement that the aforementioned, uh, budget transfer is for. This is for Jessica Thomas to work on Fridays for a couple hours, uh, for the next month or so to help with the transition to, uh, the, the new employee. Did I get that all right?
Correct.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between Jessica Thomas and the Town of Free Town.
Motion made.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also related, I will entertain a motion to appoint Jessica Thomas as a department assistant effective ten one twenty twenty-one through ten thirty-one twenty twenty-one.
Motion made.
Second that, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is, um, moving on to agenda item thirty-one. This is vote to approve the agreement between Isabel Ferrera and the Town of Free Town, so she will also be working on Fridays, um, helping with the transition. Um, since she left. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between Isabel Ferrera and the Town of Free Town.
Okay, we have a minimum of three, uh, a dollar amount.
Okay.
So the agreement has one dollar, um, amount and, um, she hasn't, she actually said she wouldn't do it for that. So, um, we're negotiating with her.
Okay, so should I hold off on this, on this, and then, and the, what, anything?
Either that, I, I mean, we, we asked her if she would accept thirty-five dollars an hour.
Yep.
I don't know if you want to just amend the contract with that, or, um, we can put it on the next agenda.
And what, what was the difference between, well, yeah, we, we're meeting on next Monday, right?
Yes.
October four, yes, Sunday. Why don't we just put it off till then?
Yeah, I think it just makes sense, put it off till then. Because technically, she wouldn't start until.
Yep.
The Friday of that week anyways, right?
She's got, she would be like as an as needed, so it wouldn't be a scheduled number of hours.
Okay.
If Patricia has to call her for assistance.
Okay, that's fair. All right, yeah, so we'll put it off the next week. So that takes care of agenda items, uh. Yeah, thirty-one, thirty-two. This is discussion of vote on the Board of Selectmen, um, representation on the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority. So we pretty much need to have somebody on that, and we currently do not. Did I get that right?
It has Lisa.
Or it has Lisa, yeah, you're right.
And it says designate George. So we just have to replace the representative?
So, yeah. So can we make the representative George since he's the current designate, or should we, Jared, do you have any interest in becoming the?
I mean, I would, I would say why don't we try and bring George up to the representative and then I'll be the designate or something?
Yeah.
Right, because that would be, the way I would see it is he would kind of take the lead and then I would follow.
Yeah, and I guess like, is this a big, like, time consuming kind of thing, do, does anyone know?
I just don't want to play it off so big.
Yeah. I don't know, so, okay, well, I think we'll, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to make George the representative and Jared the designate for the for the, I want to make sure I get this right, for the representation on the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority, effect, yeah.
Motion made.
All right, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so. Town administrators' report, we don't really have anything necessarily, but if you have anything you want to bring up?
No, I'm just still trying to meet with everybody one on one since I've, I've been here, so I've, I've met with, you know, quite a few people within the town hall. I've come to the police station, I, I'm still trying, you know, so hopefully in the next week or two, I will, I met with everybody.
Awesome.
Just trying to, you know, get to know everybody and let them know I'm here and if they have any concerns. So I'm still just breaking myself in here.
And that, I think what we'll owe you soon is kind of like what our big ticket items are, you know, like.
Yeah.
And so that's something that, that we need to pull together as a support.
Yeah.
Maybe, yep, yeah, each of us, maybe individually too, that, that, that would be good, but I think it's great that you're going down, meeting everybody, and that really needs to be done. And, um, I'm very excited for the future here, so.
So hopefully, you know, in a few weeks, I'll have some, I'll report with everything that I, you know, you know, you've heard some of it tonight, some of the policies that we're gonna have to start working on.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not quite there yet.
All right, great, okay. So, moving on to the Board of Park Commissioners. So this is discussion of vote on whether transfer station stickers, um, will cover for locations and a separate sticker for the town beach should be used in the beginning of twenty twenty-two. I think on this, and I'm very open to conversation, so I could, Luann, I know you're plugged into this, both you guys are. So with, I think there should be one recreational sticker and then one transfer station sticker. Because I don't see those as at all related. So like, one would be for Hathaway Park, Bandstand, and the town beach, and one would be for transfer station. So then we can figure out like, who's buying for what, money from those can be allocated, you know, they're probably not gonna really be allocated specifically still, but in general, I'm assuming.
So you'd be able to track it.
At least track it and have a better understanding, have some metrics around it.
I think you nailed it right there, that how many people are buying stickers because they want to go to the beach versus how many people are buying stickers because they just want to go to the transfer station and garritism stuff, so. Um, separating the two stickers, and I guess one of the things we'll have to figure out is dollar amounts, because that's, you know, some of the residents will care.
Yeah.
Are you there, we're gonna say, okay, if one right now works for everything, we're probably gonna have to do something about adjusting the dollar amount accordingly between the two.
And so, yes, that, that's what we figured out also, if you, so, anyone can buy a trash, a transfer sticker, you don't, you, you have to be a town resident to get a transfer sticker? You do. But, but you don't have to be a resident to get a, historically, until we changed the rules, you didn't have to be a resident to get a, the beach pass, right?
Right, it was a different color sticker.
Okay.
But I'm curious, as I don't think I've ever observed any signs at the Bandstand and or Hathaway Park for parking.
There were, there really isn't any parking at the Bandstand, except for those couple spots.
Eliminate those two places.
What, that's a good, that's a good point.
And then just have a beach and just have a transfer station sticker and call it a day?
Yeah, what's the point of having, what's the point of having stickers if it's not enforced at all, there's no.
Right.
Meters, anyone could park, I don't have a sticker, I go park at the Bandstand right now.
Right.
Or Hathaway Park.
So that's not thinking.
No, that makes, I didn't, that makes a lot more sense.
With a rate for the beach, what's a fair, um, fee for parking for the beach? And they would start selling those hypothetically January first, so we would just have to know before then, if you want to think about it and then let us know, or.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, if you pull together what some other towns are selling for their beach passes. Like, uh, e- even if it's, yeah, like, I know, I'm thinking of like what Mattapoisie and like Marion and like.
Yeah, I'm thinking more, thinking of like Lakeville, where.
Yeah.
Because it's a town pond versus, uh, the ocean, right? So you start trying to compare.
Apples and oranges a little bit?
Yeah, to Dartmouth, Mattapoisie, Marion.
I bet they're cheaper, I bet the town beaches up, up there are cheaper than you think, though.
Yeah.
I know, Lola had, um, started to compile some information on that, and some of them were like seventy-five dollars.
Oh, really?
Some of them were like twenty-five dollars, so it was kind of all over the place, so she'll put something together.
Yeah.
For a future meeting so that you can kind of make an educated decision.
Okay.
I just don't want to shock the system where all of a sudden we break apart stuff and then we, all of a sudden the residents are saying we're spending, it's costing us a lot more money. I do both things and you're charging me that's a lot more dollars. So I, I do, because especially now where it's strictly town residents, I want to make sure that we're able to give them a good service at a good price.
Yeah.
I mean, none, none of this is gonna break the bank, but.
I agree with that.
One other, uh, thing I just wanted to bring up today, just because it's a tough bind, not specifically on the agenda, but like, the trash on Main Street in the Sonnet and down, and even Narrows Road is so bad right now. And I'd, I'd like to look into our, like, what can we do about that? I, like, is it something we can maybe get the Bristol County Sheriff's Department, you know, or the Correctional Facility to send people to pick up trash? Or is, like, how we tell this in the past, I, the past, I know it's been cleaned up before, but it's like disgusting.
Yeah, and I, I, I do remember from Chuck talking about some other stuff in there, some parts of that are state roads, some parts aren't, so I don't know what they'll come versus what they won't, but.
Yeah.
I, I know that in the Bay Shores, they, they would come, and they, they come in May or April and they clean the beach.
Yeah.
They clean the beach and everything, so.
The beach?
The Open Space Committee was talking about doing some kind of a cleanup.
That's something to keep in mind with both.
They would be interested.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I just, we gotta get something in motion before all, you know, snow comes and it's all trash snow and, you know, probably want to do stuff, you know, a nice cleanup now.
And it just South Main?
That's just, so what happened was, well, context, my, my, we didn't have, my wife and I, both our cars weren't available, so my wife walked my dog from my house in the Bay Shores to the groomer in the Sonnet. And so she was sending me pictures of all the trash she saw on the whole way. And she hasn't stopped talking about it since. And so she's making me do something about it, which I think is, you know, totally fair.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. All right, so with that, so, um, I will, anything else, I think we're good here today? All agenda items crossed off? That was a roller coaster. Thanks to everyone bearing with me, um, just jumping around there. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.